I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ahman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dakin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlique.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? I have one. And we'd like to add to the consent items, the, add the accounts payable. Any others? Do we need a motion to approve?
I think if that's the only item that you're adding, then it would be a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So a motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We have a presentation here to the mayor and the council from Mary Cathcartwood and Russ Bennett on the community-owned grocery store. Would you please step up? Introduce yourselves and...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilman. It's great to be here tonight. I'm Mary Cathcartwood with the Wilmer Community-Owned Grocery Store.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to present. I'm Russ Bennett with the community-owned store.
We appreciate your giving us a few minutes to update you on the progress we've been making with the Wilmer Community-Owned Grocery, and we have this slideshow here. Our model is the St. Peter Food Co-op. It's been in existence for about 30 years. As you can tell from these pictures, it was started as a small, little grocery storefront and has grown to a large, thriving business today in St. Peter. The reason we, that's one of our primary models is that St. Peter, as you know, is a community of about 10,000 people outside the metro area. This is the, today's St. Peter Food Co-op. They have rebuilt several times, and this is the latest version built several years ago. Picture this in downtown Wilmer. This is what we're, our vision for the Wilmer Community-Owned Grocery. What will the COG look like? This is a picture of the Seward Co-op, which is in the middle of Minneapolis. It is a large, thriving, growing very rapidly, community-owned grocery, as is the COG. This has been there for over 30 years, and it is a full-service grocery, as we will be. Everything on your grocery list, so if you want to make one stop for your shopping, that's what you get. There's a full freezer section, there's plenty of bulk goods, and meat section featuring locally-produced meats. There's the produce section. If you notice the labels, we can't read them, but they will identify the producer and the farm where the products came from, whether they're organic or not. I want to mention that one of the aspects of this grocery and one of the seven cooperative principles is education, and we intend to manage lots of education on healthy eating and how to cook healthy foods at our grocery. Moving ahead, this is a producer for the St. Peter Co-op. This is a young man who came to visit us last spring and did a community forum for us, along with his produce manager. This couple owns a farm. They provide produce to the co-op, to CSA shares, and to the farmer's market, and they explain to us the way they order local produce. The produce manager works with about four local producers primarily, and they plan, of course, the winter before what the production levels will be and what the co-op will contract for. And this, again, is one of the young men who's one of the producers there. The COG will feature a full-service deli and coffee shop, a community gathering place, featuring healthy foods, will have eat-in, carry-out, and a wonderful community hub in downtown Wilmer. A little over a year ago, we were formed as a cooperative. We're filed with the Secretary of State. We have articles and bylaws. This is our organizing board. We have a nine-member organizing board. The people indicated with an asterisk are former board members. And this is our end statement: "To build a vibrant economy by promoting personal wellness, cultivating a strong local food network, and celebrating a diverse, educated, healthy, and sustainable community." Russ?
Thank you, Mary. Of course, many of you will recognize me as a local businessman. I've been very heavily involved in the Chamber of Commerce here in town, and also spent six years on the Minnesota Chamber. So when I got involved with the co-op, I came at it from somewhat of a business perspective, and we just want to show you that, we aren't going to read all these slides today, but show you that, that this organization will have a large impact. And I wanted to emphasize that this type of food co-op is kind of taking the country by storm. This is a, some of them are 30 years old, but this kind of new model, where, if you remember the old candy cupboard from years and years ago, that was, that's not the type of model that we're looking at. These will be full and part-time employed people and with a full selection of products. Look at that. I think that's impressive. I like to say that that's March when I joined the board, but I don't think that's... But we exceeded our 300 first stage. I need to emphasize that. It's the first stage. The business that I own, Bennett Office Technologies, we've really changed that business. It's gone through, you know, from office supplies today to high-end servers and security. When we made those changes, we've always hired consultants, because there are people in business that can help us improve our businesses. And I was really impressed when I joined the board of the COG, is that they hired, in my opinion, the best consultant in the nation. I think that CDS, and that's not the accounting firm in town, they're called Co-op Development Services, and they're out of the Twin Cities. They've done this many, many times. They have a formula for success, and I believe if our board follows that, it will be a success. So here are some of our accomplishments, and all of these have been coached with the consultants. We've had market studies completed. This isn't a fly-by-night operation. We're serious about this, and we're going to get this done. We have it fully organized. We have our databases, marketing materials. I think you'll see some fabulous marketing even continue to come out of our, out of our marketing group. Stage one, that was the original, that's the first stage that we've completed. We've reached our membership goal of 300 for that stage. We also had a good meeting out at Robins Island at the Shelter, our first annual meeting of shareholders. It's a good group. But basically, that first 300 gives us legitimacy. That means go ahead. You've got, you know, you're going to get the support. Stage two, there, we're going to confirm the feasibility, we're going to start to talk about sites, we're going to do an updated pro forma. We have hired an outreach coordinator, and that person will start 18th, which is Thursday. We won't drop any names, but I think you'll know her father. And then the membership goal of 600 is the next step. So now we're working from 300 to 600. And then we'll hit stage three. This is where the rubber really hits the road. We'll be preparing for construction, preparing for opening, and by that time, we expect to be at 100 members for our membership goal. Excuse me, 1,000, yeah, dropped a digit there. So those are our objectives. I really, really am excited about this project for many hats. One, my Chamber of Commerce hats, the prospect of having people from Milan, from Kirkoven, from all around our state, actually, growing for us. Can you imagine how much diesel fuel we'll save from not having to import our, let's say, I mean, some of our corn, I know, comes from Missouri and all over, but I'm excited about that. I'm also excited as a prospect for being a grandfather. I have four grandchildren, and already, we've seen allergies in the kids, and we have to be very careful on the types of foods that they eat. And you may have seen that study that said that organic food is not necessarily any better nutritionally. Everybody see that? I wish they wouldn't have published that, or if they would have explained it better. The key word there was nutritionally. They didn't really talk about the tons of pesticides and things that the growers are throwing on our produce to bring it, as far as they bring it. So those are the exciting things that we have about it. I think you'll want to know that our preferred site, our consultant says that we need a 7,000 to 10,000 square foot building, and we need 30 to 40 parking spots right in front of that. There aren't a lot of spots in downtown that are going to fit that bill, but we're going to try to find one, and we're going to try to make it to work, because we'd leave, we'd like to have it and want to have it in downtown. If we exhaust all those avenues, we'll find, you know, whatever spot the consultant says that we're going to be successful. That's the key. We can't just put it hidden away in a spot where our customers can't find us. So there's the successful models. I spent two hours last Friday with the president of the board in, of Harvest Moon in Long Lake, that's Tom Geiger, Gary Geiger's brother, and two hours with the manager, David. And it is really exciting to see the people coming and going, hauling out the produce and shopping. And one part of it that I didn't get until just recently, and Mary will probably laugh at this, because she got it 30 years ago, and that's the community aspect. If you weren't going to chamber meetings, if you didn't play golf at Eagle Creek, and if you didn't attend my church, I didn't know who you were. But I'm excited about this, because I've already met a lot of new people, and it is going to be a community, community meeting place and an exciting addition to the town. So thank you for your time.
I want to just follow up on a couple of things that Russ said. He mentioned that our membership is broad geographically, and our membership at 300 represented 19 counties in southwest Minnesota. So, but these are people that we will be bringing into Wilmer for their shopping. Another point I wanted to mention to you, we gave you all some literature before we started tonight, and in there, you will learn that next Tuesday night, October 23rd, we're sponsoring a public forum at the Wilmer Library, and we are bringing in the general managers of two established food co-ops. And one is the Harvest Moon, Dave, that you met last week, and the other one is the St. Peter Food Co-op. So they'll be instructing us and answering all of our questions. Do you have any questions for us?
Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been told not to ask questions, but I'm going to ask them anyway. How about food inspection? Is it going to be like a regular grocery, where you have a manager? You said part-time and full-time employees. So there will be an onsite manager, right?
Yes, there will be an onsite manager, professional grocery manager, and we intend to hire that manager at the beginning of stage three, at the commencement of construction and planning the building. And all of the food will be, meet all USDA inspection standards.
Does that include, how about the people farming the food, you know, raising the corn, lettuce, whatever? Do they have some kind of inspection that they have to have done at their facility too, or not?
Not that I know of. And here again, you know, this is a professional question for a general manager. I know that all of the meats, of course, will be processed in USDA facilities, and the produce will need to meet the standards of our general manager under the direction of our board.
Okay. It sounds like it's going to be just like any other grocery store, and, I mean, the pictures, beautiful.
I think some people are under the impression it'll be 100% organic, and that's not correct. I mean, these stores typically will have organic and non-organic foods, and they'll be labeled as such, but organic, I think you have to be certified by the government to actually label your product organic.
Will they have a candy lane too, then? Like licorice?
Organic candy, for sure.
It sounds like a great idea, and I know it'll be a terrific addition for downtown if you can find a spot. And do you have any ideas for where downtown, like the Mills Block, or, I mean, is there, are there other spots available that we don't know about? It seems like there's not a place with 30 or 40 parking places in front of it, but...
We do have a site selection committee that is hard at work right now. They have told us that they're not ready to announce anything yet.
Okay. Well, you've done a lot of work, and I congratulate you and look forward to your grocery opening.
Thank you.
Councilman Dakin, did you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your report. What sort of an impact will this have on folks that have food stands around town that sell corn and vegetables and things like that?
That was a question that I asked, if you're familiar with Long Lake, there's an Apple store that's right down the street from Long Lake, and I asked that of Harvest Moon, and they said in many cases, they'll work together with them and put their products in the store, and they seem to be coexisting pretty well.
Okay. Thank you.
I know in the St. Peter Co-op, if you know what a CSA is, it's where you buy a farm share and you get a delivery all summer long. They are the drop-off point for CSAs, and so they've, they really exist very well together and build each other's business.
We would love to, for those of you, I know a couple of you are already members, but we'd love to see that application in the mail.
And we'd like to see you next Tuesday night at 6:30 at the library to learn some more.
Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want everybody to know, I'm the proud father of the employee that will be starting work there on Thursday, and it's my daughter. They're moving back from Minneapolis.
And we're looking forward to that.
Any further questions? I have a comment to make, is, are you looking outside the downtown area if need be?
If need be, of course, we will. What we want is the best location for a thriving food co-op in Wilmer. Our intent is to cite that downtown. If we can't cite it downtown, we'll find out the best place.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we will have the city council open forum. I see we just have one speaker, Mr. Huser.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilman. I have positive news for you tonight as well. It's good to hear about the grocery store. I think organic candy probably looks like carrots, Mr. Christensen. As a council, I think you've been getting a bum rap this last week. Hopefully, most of our citizens have shrugged off the innuendos and negative editorial of last week, as efforts of our local press to join the big leagues is posturing for the upcoming election. Understandable, but council bashing in the press must not make you feel any very good. I'm here with my rose-colored glasses to cheer you up and commend each of you for the part you play in managing our city's affairs. You aren't spending your evenings here for the money. If that were the case, you'd all be running for a county commissioner's vacancy. So I felt the need to tell you, your efforts to make things better at a lower cost to the taxpayers is much appreciated. And to those councilmen who are specifically besmirched and are ineligible for a newspaper award, this is simply a prelude to next week's ballot endorsement revelations. I guess you knew it wasn't happening anyway. I urge you to keep asking questions. They have made a difference and will continue to do so. When people get defensive and grumpy about simple inquiry and need for substantiation, it is a sign they could be hiding something. The complainers are advocates of hope and change, but when you want to change, they lose hope. Remember the words of Ronald Reagan, "Trust, but verify." Your attempt to do more with less taxpayer money is responsible and noteworthy. And a special comment to you, Councilman Christensen. You don't look like Attila the Hun to me. I apologize to you for the unjustified personal attacks upon your efforts to fulfill your civic responsibilities. Dissent should not reach the level of personal attack, but it has, and it can provide you the comfort of knowing you may be on to something. Those who oppose transparency or are unable to tolerate someone else's point of view and hold grudges about past differences should be marginalized. Your questions have made many differences in city governance, and I hope they will for years to come. This community owes you a debt of gratitude. Thank you, gentlemen, for your attention.
And thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. David? I'd like, is there any further comments from the council? If not, I'd like to make a comment, and it's a word of thanks to the Wilmer Area Community Foundation. A week ago, last Thursday, the foundation had a very successful honors award banquet. Success is measured in providing well-deserved recognition to Dr. Roger and Kay Strand as this year's award recipient. The banquet also featured Peter Hutchinson, the well-known former CEO of the Bush Foundation, former candidate for governor, and much more. He shared his most valuable life lessons with the audience, and they include, "Be proud of your community. There's always something to be proud of." A leader is someone who changes things to make things better. In order to improve things, you have to look beyond normal solutions. You need to ask a lot of questions to understand the issues and then be creative. And for those of you that don't get it, I'll repeat the sentence. And the sentence is, "You need to ask a lot of questions to understand the issue and then be creative." Sometimes, we just need to do the seemingly unreasonable. To be unreasonable, it's okay, it's justified. These lessons appear applicable to our community and to this council, and to the mayor. As your mayor, I hope to lead you further in this direction. And the next item on the agenda is the Finance Committee report dated October 8th, 2012. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda was public comment, and there was no one present at that meeting to comment to us. The next item was Rice Hospital presented their five-year plan. Mike Schram presented an overview of Rice Memorial Hospital's five-year financial plan, which establishes specific balance sheet and profitability targets, along with projected capital expenditures through 2017. Bill Fenske reviewed key financial and statistical indicators used to prepare this five-year plan, as well as projected financial statements. It was noted that as new or enhanced programs and services are considered, their financial impact on this five-year plan will be addressed. That was taken for information only, and that was a very, very interesting and informative discussion we had. The next item had to do with West Central Industries. Staff informed us that originally, the council was to take action on a resolution on October 1st for the West Central Industries conduit financing request. That had been postponed until this evening due to illness of the executive director, Mr. Oakes. By way of information, in 2005, West Central Industries obtained a private revenue note for $1.1 million through conduit financing, and are now requesting to refinance the remaining balance of $500,000. This new note will reduce their interest rate to 2.35% and shorten the term by approximately five years. That was also taken for information. Fourth item were some reports. We looked at the local option sales tax, RAC 8, and the CVB. That was also for information. Next item, we talked about some future agenda items. In October 22nd, we will have a workshop, and some of the agenda items will be capital improvement program. We will have an HRA budget presentation, and we will talk about fund balances amongst some other things. Agenda items scheduled for November 26th will include budget presentations by Rice Hospital and the MUC. And we know that there's going to be a waste treatment plant rate study coming, and suggestion was made that we have a work session on that, preferably like an hour before we have our, one of our council meetings. So that was all information. Then under, we had some miscellaneous. We discussed the fact that the payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the Wilmer Municipal Utilities is expiring at the end of this year and needs to be renegotiated. In the past, the finance committee chair and the city administrator have negotiated the agreement with the MUC. It was a consensus of the committee members that this same process be followed for negotiating the new agreement. Finance Director Okens reviewed with the committee the recent changes enacted by the council that impacted the 2013 budget. The proposed increase to the mayor and council salaries in the amount of $13,500 has been deducted. Offsetting that reduction, $13,000 was added for the contribution to the baseball boosters, and $500 has been added to the mayor and council travel budget. The library's funding request was reduced by $5,500, and of that $500 has been reallocated to the mayor and council travel budget as well. As a result, $5,000 remains for reallocation. Other items not factored into the 2013 budget include a revenue for the building inspection services contract with Cantillon County, which will total approximately $15,000, and the expenditure of $5,000 for contribution to the 2040 vision planning. Councilmember Fagerly also pointed out that it has not yet been decided if the contribution to the Historical Society will be $5,000 in 2013 or $1,000 a year for five years. Mayor Yanis commented that contracted airport management services are being considered. Consequently, there may be changes in 2013 airport budget as well. All of that was for information. Unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second. Excuse me. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the October 8th Finance Committee report. Is there any discussion? I have a question, Councilman Anderson.
Yes, sir.
It's not clear in my mind what the policy is or what the future holds for the budget process. Could you clear that up in my mind, please?
Well, ultimately, we have to have the budget finalized by like December 3rd or...
The target date for adoption is December 3rd. I think you actually have till December 31st, if I'm not mistaken.
The continuation...
I defer to Steve Okens for that.
The initial hearing is scheduled for December 3rd with a continuation hearing if it is not adopted at that point for the 17th of December.
Okay, but maybe, maybe the thing that we really need to talk about is, we, as a council, need to finalize all of our issues and concerns and come up with the final number on the November 26th workshop session. And that's kind of what we've typically done in the past. We've put everything together at that time. Now, we've already made some changes and suggestions, and we've moved some things around, but we need to finalize everything.
Excuse me, if I may interrupt. I understand that our finance director has a list of those items that are changed in the...
We just reviewed some, and... We just reviewed some, and some things that are still pending. So they have a list of where the pluses and minuses are to this point.
So we have until December 3rd to change?
That is correct. We will continue to make these changes, the pluses and the minuses, up until December 3rd for the council's adoption. So we have typically kind of reviewed all final changes November 26th, and then if there's any changes that also come on November 26th, we will review those again on December 3rd for the council to...
So did you tell me that there's a meeting on October 22nd?
Yes.
What does that meeting pretend to be?
That's a workshop. We're going to talk about a few things. That's next Monday, and I'll announce it now. It's next Monday. It'll be here, and it's a workshop for everyone. We're going to talk about the capital improvement program is one thing. I know it was discussed a little bit a while back, but we need to flush that out completely and see if we are all in agreement. The HRA is going to be there to do their annual budget presentation, and we're going to talk about fund balances. And then we're going to open it up for any other thoughts, ideas, questions, and concerns from the council.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll go into the Public Works Committee report for October 9th. Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda, Jared Vogt from Bolton &amp; Mink was at our meeting, and he reviewed the bids for the airport crack ceiling and turf runway repair. The bids were opened in August, and there was only one bid in September. The bid was rejected, and authorization was granted to re-advertise separating the improvements into two projects. On September 20th, there were three bids received, and the low base bid plus Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC of Eau Claire, Wisconsin, was the low bid. No bids were received for the turf establishment, so quotes were solicited, and there were two responses. The low quote received was from Kuchley Underground of Kimball, Minnesota. The funding source for the improvements is 70% from state, 30% local funds, which are budgeted in our 2012 capital improvements. And to use the state monies, the project must be under contract in 2012, and construction must be completed in 2013. So I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept the bid of Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC in the amount of $81,996.80 for the crack seal improvements, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to recommend the resolution accept the bid of, how do I pronounce it, Farner?
Keakle.
Oh.
No.
Farner.
Farner. Asphalt Sealers LLC in the amount of $81,996.80 for the crack seal improvements, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Then I would introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept the quote from Kuchley Underground for turf establishment in the amount of $72,481.1 and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the quote of Kuchley Underground for turf establishment in the amount of $72,481.1 and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion carries.
Next item was in regards to the Western Interceptor sewer connection, and Josh Halverson from Donahue &amp; Associates was at our meeting. This would be a pipe that connects to our existing sewer at 30th Street and 30th Avenue Southwest, and then it proceeds along 30th Street, crosses 19th Avenue Southwest, continues north along the west side of Colony Road Number 5, crossing Highway 12, and up to 1st Avenue Northwest in Voss Park. There were seven bids that were received in June of this year, and the low bid was from Geislinger &amp; Sons Incorporated from Watkins, Minnesota. The bids were evaluated for conformance and qualifications to perform the work, and the low bidder was also established by references and financial data and previous experience. Donahue recommends awarding the alternate bid, which is the inclusion of the storm sewer for an additional cost of $505,769 for a total contract of $3,575,354.25. And this is under the engineer's estimate. There were no, that no construction will begin without the former airport site being released and finalized. So I would introduce the resolution to award the contract for Project 1110, which is the Western Interceptor, to Geislinger &amp; Sons Incorporated in the amount of $3,575,354.25, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into a contract on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to award the contract for Project Number 1110 to Geislinger &amp; Sons Incorporated in the amount of $3,575,354.25, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into a contract on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion carries.
The next item was the Lakeland Drive Interceptor and the Midwest Lift Station project, and the proposals for engineering service to design that were received from six firms with the costs ranging from $320,261 to $515,436. This project includes the reconstruction of Lakeland Drive to an urban section, and four staff members reviewed and scored the proposals, and the three highest scoring firms were interviewed. It was staff's recommendation to accept the proposal of Donahue &amp; Associates. The Public Works Safety Committee discussed the scoring and evaluation process at length. It was noted this particular scoring system has been used by the city in the past for selecting an engineering firm. I did make a motion, which failed due to lack of a second, to approve staff's recommendation of Donahue &amp; Associates. This item is being brought to the council without a recommendation, and there was a request made to see the scoring results of the interview process. Staff took a look at making sure that this information was available upon approval of our city attorney and city clerk. Should the council pass a resolution to engage a consultant, two other resolutions to identify a source of funds and to state intent to reimburse will be required as well. So I know that there was a lot of questions on all of the committee's part. I even started the questioning because it felt uncomfortable, even in the fact that some of the rating was due to the different engineering firms having experience doing work for the city of Wilmer. But I guess I should probably ask on our city administrator's part, maybe to review a little bit for the rest of the council.
Sure, and Bruce Peterson can also assist in answering any questions. The process is, and there was an additional memorandum put in your packets this week too, to try to explain the process, is, you know, first, there's the need for the Lakeland sewer because it's inadequately sized for the current and anticipated flows, and so we do need to replace the Lakeland Interceptor as well as the lift station, which is aging. The process that we used is similar to processes we've used in the past where we develop a scope of work of the project and define that, and then develop an RFP for that. We did develop that RFP with staff, and we did have some advice from some consulting engineering firms as we developed the proposal. We issued that, and we did receive six responses. Several of the responses included a team approach, which means it was one engineering firm maybe doing the wastewater work, and another engineering firm paired with them to do the roadwork, because it is a sewer project that also involves the Lakeland project. So there was a team approach that was used by quite a few firms, and then the staff reviewed the proposals, both in terms of cost as well as in terms of their technical qualifications. And the summary of the scores of the six firms is included in your agenda book. It is, sorry, there's not a page number, but if you, behind the minutes, about three or four pages, and that shows you what the average score of the firms were. Three firms were selected to be interviewed, Bolton &amp; Mink, Bollig Incorporated, and Donahue &amp; Associates were all the firms that were interviewed. And at this point, of course, we know it's determined that all of the firms are technically qualified to do the work, or we wouldn't be interviewing them. So they're all qualified to do the work, and I certainly wouldn't suggest that any of them are not. The staff recommendation is for Donahue &amp; Associates, and that recommendation was made just in, for a couple of reasons. They have a greater depth of experience with water and wastewater issues, and particularly that experience with, specific to the city of Wilmer projects and such. But that's, again, not a negative critique of the other firms. It was, you know, the recommendation for the staff was based upon, you know, price, their price being what we felt was reasonable, even though it is not the lowest proposal, but also on their overall experience. And that's the rationale for the staff's recommendation. If Mr. Peterson has anything to add to that or anything that I've missed, I'm sure he will jump in.
Here's the end, members of the council. I think the important thing to focus on as far as the staff recommendation is concerned is that we did do a significant review of the proposals. We did score them on technical merit, technical qualifications, and then the cost was certainly a consideration in arriving at the total score. Yet, at the end of the review, at the end of the interview process, it is the recommendation of staff that we proceed with Donahue as the best combination of technical capabilities and price.
I have a comment. With all due respect, Ms. Stevens, can you tell me, I was told that you entered into the interview and was not a part of the original discussion, am I right?
That is correct. I participated in the interview process but not in the scoring process, and the reason I participated in the interview process was because at that time, the city engineer had announced that she was leaving.
Okay. Is that abnormal?
I don't know that it is or not. I mean, it was a request because we were in transition because of the city engineer. I think if the city engineer had not announced she was leaving and we had, I probably would not have participated in the process, but it was a function of transition of the organization at the time.
I believe that this to be important enough that I'm going to open it up to the, after the council, of course. Councilman Christensen, you look like you're going to ask a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been struggling with this since the meeting. Mr. Bollig is a local guy from Wilmer, went to school here. He's got a local firm, and we've been told, Chambers been here many times saying we should buy a local. I believe it's a member staff. And I think we need to hear from him, and I believe some of his cohorts from the firm in Fargo are with him. At the meeting, Councilmember DeBlique requested some information. We have not seen that information yet. He requested that we should see how the scoring was done. It's not that we don't trust staff. It's that the old axiom, "Trust but verify." I personally, personal, that feel that Mr. Bollig has been cut out of the mix, and for what reasons, I don't know. But I do think that we owe him and his partners here the ability to speak to the council this evening before we make our decision on this. And just a reminder, we are elected to oversee the purse strings of the taxpayers, and I believe we were $38,000 or $48,000 apart on this. It may not seem like much, but it does to taxpayers. And with that, I would ask that Mr. Bollig be able to speak.
Councilman, do you give the same right to the people from Donahue to speak if they wish?
Won't bother me. Yeah, I mean, it's your meeting, so you can certainly do that. Yeah.
Was there any words that you would like to say, Mr. Bollig?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Yenisch and councilmembers. Bollig is a young, energetic engineering consultant firm. We formed five years ago in 2007. A year ago, we were proud to have 65 years of collective and engineering experience. Today, we have 140 years of collective experience. We are growing a firm. We want to grow in Wilmer. We want Wilmer to grow. Today, I have with me is Paul Jerk with Bollig Engineering, Charlie Vean, President of Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services, and Scott Shafer, the wastewater manager for Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services, or referred to as AE2S. I want to make known here that we are in partnering firm with AE2S. We actually were approached by several different firms to partner with us. We selected AE2S because their qualifications closely matched who Bollig was, which is, we're looking for the long-term, the best quality project for our clients. And Charlie Vean and I have known each other for 10, 12 years now, and I know several of his firm members, and they have built an extremely reputable firm. They have several offices, and the office that's going to be doing all, that does all their wastewater work is actually located in Minnesota, out of their Maple Grove office. And I also want to mention that Bollig is the lead consultant on this project. AE2S is the subconsultant for Bollig. So although we have shared responsibilities on the project, the buck stops with Bollig. We're here to present that we're the most qualified locally and lowest-priced firm as a combination for behalf of the city. I did grow up here in Wilmer, and went to school here, moved away, and came back. Many of my employees have done the same. They come back for a reason, because there's local ties to the area, and there's an opportunity to succeed. Wilmer's gives that opportunity to Bollig. We want to continue to grow. The chambers promotes that 80% of the growth within an economic area is driven by those that are from the area, meaning that they have ideas, they build these ideas, and they grow these ideas in that community. Bollig has done that, has demonstrated that it wants to grow in Wilmer. We're not just a one-person firm, we're a 12-person firm. We don't necessarily want to stop at 12, we want to continue to grow. We do that by making sure our projects succeed, and we have the most talented group of individuals present on our team to service our clients. That's why we brought on AE2S. We also happen to have the lowest price. We also happen to have the lowest price. Typically, you don't find that on your local firm. Your local firm has the most to lose. It's their reputation that's on stake. We have to perform. It's imperative to the growth for our company that we provide excellent quality and service to the City of Wilmer. We propose to do that, and we propose to do that at the lowest cost for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bollig. Would you please introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Charlie Vien. I am President of Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services, or shorter-named AE2S. With me is Scott Shafer. Scott Shafer is the manager of our wastewater group. A little bit of background about ourselves, we are a specialty firm. About 70% of our income is all from engineering of water and wastewater projects. We don't do transportation, we don't do a lot of the other municipal type of projects. We are specific to water and wastewater. Similar to Brian, we're a startup firm. That's nearly 21 years ago now. We've grown from two people to over 200 people in the firm. Regionally, we're located in, have office locations in Montana, North Dakota, and Minnesota. Morehead, Minnesota was our second open location. We have two offices in the cities right now. Maple Grove is our office where most of our wastewater work is engineered out of, and that office is around a 20-person office for us right now. From an experience standpoint, we've done, in the past year, Scott, how many? About 80 million?
Last five.
Last five years, about $80 million worth of wastewater work. And the people that we've assigned to this project, Scott has done several dozen lift stations. Our senior lead engineer in this project has done over 100 lift stations. So from the standpoint, I guess, of our experience and knowledge of working with wastewater, specifically with lift stations, I think is very adequate, and probably more than adequate for this type of a project. Along with it, we have in-house engineering expertise, structural expertise, controls expertise. We do a lot of things that are specific to the engineering of water and wastewater projects. As Brian mentioned, we've known each other for quite some time. I think our firms have a very similar attitude towards working with clients and providing the best service that we can, and we're proud to be a part of the Bollig engineering team.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of the council. Given the opportunity, I guess I'd just like to make a couple of points that should be noted for consideration. First of all, city staff should be praised for their efforts. I mean, they have been, they've collaborated, many staff members put in a lot of hours. And first of all, these include identifying the project needs. Obviously, that has been met. This is by no means an average complexity or size of a job. They have also identified the scope of the work, preparing the quest for proposals to all interested parties, enhancing questions of interested parties, evaluation of proposals, receive interviews of selected firms, and finally, presentation of their information and recommendation to you, City Council. Their recommendation is presented on their vast knowledge of the work needed and in the best interests of the city. I might be a little blunt here, but I'm going to just say, to scrutinize their recommendation is a little demoting to the positions they serve. The second remark I want to make is the evaluation process, which the city has mentioned, is not new by any means. It's not uncommon procedure. The notion behind the process is to get the most technically-suited professional service at the best price. This doesn't always necessarily mean and not just the lowest price. Most clients of mine implement the same process and means of valuation for determination of these professional services. Again, this process is not new for the City of Wilmer. It has been developed and implemented and evolved since, I think, believe, 2004. Last council meeting, you awarded the 2013 street reconstruction projects and engineering services based on the same RFP proposals. Donahue and Associates, as you know, we are very well qualified. We have performed a lot of work for you guys for the City of Wilmer. I don't think I need to iterate much more of our qualifications. Just in the past, I mean, just for an earmark, we've completed over a dozen different successful contracts for the city on the same evaluation as what your staff's recommendation is tonight. This process, though, it proves that the evaluations that your staff conducts makes a successful project in the end, and it serves the best interest of the city. I will just conclude that the City Council should accept the staff's recommendation for sake of the success of the project and to protect the interests of the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council? I have a question, and I don't know if I'm correcting this to the proper person or not, Charlene, but in your mind, were all the same procedures followed as should have been followed?
Yes, we followed the procedures we've used on other proposals and such. And again, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that there's only one firm that is qualified. We interviewed three firms, all firms were qualified that we interviewed. And, you know, the two that you have before you tonight, both of them are qualified, both have done, you know, Donahue is currently doing work for us, and Bollig, we have also, you know, certainly a staff we have recommended Bollig in the past because we, they received a recent contract from the city for construction staking and services and such. And so clearly, we know that Brian and his firm is qualified to do, is qualified to do the work. The recommendation in this case was for Donahue, based on price and based on best qualification, but, so, I mean, that's kind of the choice that you, that's the choice that you have in front of you. But the procedures, I think, were the same, I know that they were the same for everyone.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Reese?
I got to say, I am, even though I tried to, I was just trying to get a feel at the meeting, I introduced a motion and it died to lack of second. I'm really torn. I'm very torn. You know, we're talking, what's, what is the estimate, estimate on this entire project? Do we know?
Bruce, do you have that estimate on the total project, construction?
Total project estimate with construction engineering, start to finish, about $8.4 million.
So $8.4 million, we're talking about a $48,000 difference. But then, and then I also look at the average score, 87 to 63.5. And I, I am a strong believer in doing business with local firms, local businesses. And we've had Donahue and Associates do a lot of work. I'm having a real hard time making a decision, and here, I know I've cut some flack for it, but I've said we need to listen to the experts, and that's our city staff, and they've made a recommendation. But I am honestly really torn on this one, and I just really don't, right now, know where to go.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm really torn. I guess I'm not understanding, they're all qualified, but then we have some sort of a scoring system that looks at something, and I don't know what it is that...
Well, we looked at, you know, the scoring system looks at the technical expertise concept, so it'll look at things such as similar types of projects that they have done of the same size, the same scope. You know, how many have they, you know, what types of projects have they done, what has been the result of those projects, what's their similar experience in that and such? So...
So is that, is that subjective at all, or is that pretty much cut and dried? You did this, you get X points, or is there some, is there subjectivity in this at all?
Well, I think, I'll let Bruce answer that question, but yes, I think there would be some.
Anytime you've got a numerical ranking, and you're numerically ranking anecdotal or narrative type of presentations or proposals, it's going to have a certain level of subjectivity. That's why we made sure that we had four people involved in the evaluation process, so you could get a mix of people's viewpoints. Somebody might interpret something a little differently. These scores are average scores. These are the results of blended results by each of the four evaluators.
Okay.
So is there subjectivity? Yes.
Yeah. Each individual is going to rank that experience, you know, based, you know, from their, from their perspective, so, you know, clearly, there will be some subjectivity in it, but that is why they're averaged, and, you know, I'm not sure that there's any process that will eliminate that either.
And then, just one final question, if I may, for our attorney, Mr. Scott, is there any legal issue not taking the lowest bid and then based on a, you know, a ranking that we've used?
No, councilmember Anderson, there's no legal issue with this process. This is a request for proposals. It's not subject to the municipal contracting law. The council is free to weigh the staff's recommendation, give it the weight it deems appropriate, and ultimately make its own determination as to which of the firms it thinks is the best fit for this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Reese?
So just to reverse that, I think you're saying that if we were to choose Bollig over Donahue, there really isn't any problem with that either.
There's certainly no legal problem. Councilman Reese?
I do have one question. Does it make any difference, Charlene, that you were not in, were you, I remember...
I did not, I did not rank, I was not, I did not participate in the ranking process. I participated in the interview process.
But you did not participate in the ranking process?
No, I did not. I participated in the interview process.
Councilman Blake, did you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I know at the committee, we talked about the scoring and how they were scored. There were some comments made about that the reason the Bollig team scored lower is because they had the team approach and experience, but we haven't seen the scoring or how that was done. Is that information available?
Yeah, we do have that information prepared and in a file. At this point, it's not available. There was no reduction in scores due to a team approach. Many of the firms brought a team approach.
Including Donahue.
Donahue, in fact, has a team approach. They've got a civil firm to do the street work. That's an extremely well-qualified firm as well, with frankly, a significant amount of experience in dealing with quiet zones, which is a part of this project as well. The issues we discussed at committee had to do more with the projects done for the City of Wilmer and the scoring that was, the points that were awarded for work done for the City of Wilmer and similar projects. And if you'll recall that I made the statement that even if all of those points were factored out, that still only made up about half the difference between the Bollig and Donahue scores if we took out the extra points for having done work locally. So that was really not a deciding consideration in staff's recommendation.
Councilman Dawkins, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's my opinion that the Bollig Inc. Engineering and Environmental did their homework. I mean, they went out of their way, as far as I'm concerned, to solicit really technical expertise on this project and not just try to do it in-house. They really did their homework, and $48,000 is a lot of money. And if we can save $48,000, it's, I will move that we award this to Bollig Engineering and Environmental.
Second. I have a motion and a second to award the contract for, how do I say that, in legal terms?
Engineering services for the Lakeland Drive Interceptor Midwest Lift Station Project.
What she said. Although, oh, this is a resolution, isn't it?
Discussion.
Discussion first. Can we have a discussion?
I'm still torn, and I really don't know. You know, Bruce brings up another thing, the quiet zone. I don't know. I really don't know. I don't know which way to go on this, to be honest with you.
Did you have a question? I'm sorry?
As stated in the RFP, though, it was supposed to be based on technical and price. Now, for you to just award based totally on price isn't justified or fair to all the other firms who submitted a proposal. If it's going to be solely on price, I guess I would like another consideration to consider a cheaper alternative teaming partners for a price reduction. I mean, we could even probably go farther than the lowest bid, I guess, if this is going to be a bidding recommendation.
Thank you. I have to ask the council where we should go from here. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I don't think we would be here if we would have given all, been given all the information at a committee meeting, and I don't know why we can't look at the scoring results from each staff member or whoever did the scoring. We have to make intelligent decisions, just like you all do. And again, it's trust but verify. We were uneasy at the council, at the committee meeting, and if we would have been presented these scoring results, I think this thing would be over with right now. I mean, I don't know why they were kept from the council. I can see maybe not to the public, but I mean, the council, we have to make decisions, and we want educated decisions. Mr. Scott, is there, is there anything that you can think of, why we shouldn't have the scoring results? Is there, I mean, is there a legal thing involved, or...
This would be over with if we would have saw those results. I think everybody would agree to that.
Councilmember Christiansen, the scoring sheets that are in existence right now that were used by staff and developed by staff, those are classified as not public data under the Data Practices Act until such time as the council makes its selection or and/or the evaluation is complete. So at this moment, I think they're not public. That means they can't be released to members of the public. There's nothing that would prevent it from being released to the city council. It shouldn't be done so in the public packet, for example, and shouldn't be made available to the public. It should be protected at this point, but there's no reason the council could not review that information if it desired to.
Well, it was asked for by Mr. DeBleek at the council, at the committee meeting, and the rest of the committee agreed that we should see that, and I assume that we'd have it before the meeting tonight, and I don't want this to go on and on and on, but I could make a decision by looking at the scoring sheet very easily. I know I'm going to get banged up and beat up in the newspaper tomorrow for speaking and asking questions, but we're here to discuss ideas, and it shouldn't be about any people. And it's either a good idea or a bad idea, and I think it was a good idea if we would have looked at the scoring. And I don't know why we have to this point...
Well, again, councilmember, those, the scores, the individual scores by the staff were not presented at the committee meeting because then it would have become a public record, and they're not public. I mean, there is an average score, and I really don't think this is a, or needs to be, a source of conflict. I mean, that you, you have the rankings, and there is an average ranking, which is the compilation of the four staff and such that have ranked that, and it is, and there certainly has been no representation by... certainly hasn't been no representation by, by the staff that any of the firms that we interviewed are not qualified to do the work. They are qualified to do the work. And, you know, the staff, the staff recommendation, again, is for Donahue, but certainly if the council wishes to make a different award, the staff will make that, will work with that consultant. It's really as simple as that.
I understand that one of the considerations was familiarity with and how much work have you done for the city of Wilmer, and then, for a young firm, they're, you know, they're lagging behind, and they never get any experience.
Well, you know, again, it was also based on projects of similar size and scope for other communities, too.
Okay.
So, all of those were factored in.
But fair, you know, or Bruce Peterson already told us that that was a very small factor, and I, and I thought that was a big deal, too, but he said it was a small factor, if I recall.
Councilman Johnson, it looks like you have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah. I was at the committee meeting. I'm not a regular member of that committee, but Mr. Councilman Fagerly wasn't available that evening, and I was asked to sit in, and Councilman DeBleek did ask for the scoring, and there was some discussion about whether it would be public, could also be released to the public, or had two parts, not only that Councilman DeBleek asked that the council members should see it before the meeting, but tonight's meeting, but also as whether or not it could be released to the public. I think Councilman DeBleek's comments went to being open and transparent about what we were doing. But at this point, I would agree with the city administrator that there's no question that the firms that were interviewed are all qualified. That, I can, I can appreciate there's some difficulty here in the decision, but we're looking at people, you know, the firms that were interviewed, they're all qualified, and that includes both of the firms that are present here tonight and have, we've had input from, so I'd be interested in maybe calling the question.
Any further comments?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. It isn't, it isn't very often we get put in this position. It's kind of challenging, and that's why we love this job. Donahue and Associates, you've been really good at the city. I want to compliment, compliment you on that. You've taken on some big projects for the waste treatment plant, and things you've accomplished have been done great, and your knowledge and expertise is fantastic, as far as I'm concerned. Even though I'm not an engineer, from what I can see, everything's working, we're getting no complaints, there are very few, and you're working close with the team there at the waste treatment plant for the changes. Every once in a while, I'm in the bidding process, too, not in projects this size, but in a smaller scale, and it's hard to lose them sometimes, but in this particular case, it's not like you're going to go away. It's not like we don't like you. I think the question here comes down to finances, the economic times, and I don't think it'd be fair, although you did request to come back and maybe have a second shot to review your estimate. That isn't really fair either, because the numbers have been exposed. I believe, you know, buying local is important, although it's, it's not always possible. What people, some firms are located out of the air, and our contractors do jobs in Minneapolis. Their general contractors do work in Minneapolis. A lot of firms in town do work in Minneapolis, South Dakota, North Dakota, where they can get the work, architectural firms, engineering firms, construction companies. So, it isn't just a citywide thing that we have to go to different places and usually look at the low bid. And as a small contractor, I look at the low bid, and if they're able to do the work, I award it to them. And in this particular case, I hope you don't take offense to it, but I wouldn't support Bollig getting the work. And it's not like you're going out of town. We do appreciate your work, at least I do. I'm sure a lot of other people do, too. Every time we use the bathroom. Also, that's on the lighter side, but, no, seriously, the size of this project is not like the wastewater treatment plant. This is a smaller-scale project, and I think Bollig, even though they might not have chalked up as many years as Donahue, I'm sure can do it just fine. And we'll take a shot at you next time.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Motion carries. I'm assuming that that means that.
Yes, I think, I believe, Mr. Peterson, we need to do the funding resolution as well.
There is a resolution that identifies a source of funding for the contract as coming from the Public Improvement Revolving Fund, and that will be a temporary source of funds until we can better determine which portion of it will come from wastewater treatment and which portion of that will come from state aid for the roadwork. So, staff would recommend that the council adopt the resolution identifying the source of funds for the contract as coming from the PIR fund.
So moved.
Second.
How shall we word that?
I think, just as Mr. Peterson did.
Yep. What Charlene said.
Okay. This is identifying the source of funds.
That's correct.
The temporary funds, yes.
And that's open for discussion? And that's a resolution? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion carries. Is there another resolution?
We do have one other resolution that's required, and that would be the adoption of a resolution stating the intent of the council to have the project expenditures reimbursed, and those will be reimbursed through, I believe, PFA funds, correct, Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah, PFA or bonding. So, that would be a separate resolution that staff would recommend.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded for the resolution, as Bruce said. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
And that motion carries.
All right, so the next one was the, again, looking at funding, and the city has received some correspondence from the state, Department of Transportation for renewal of agreement, and the Commissioner of Transportation is appointed as agent for the city of Wilmer to accept federal aid funds. The agreement covers all federal projects the city has designated funding for, and the Wilmer Avenue Crossing and Robbins Island to Downtown Trail are both projects that would fall within this type of funding in 2013. Staff is recommending acceptance of the agreement, which has been approved by our city attorney, so I would introduce a resolution to accept the agency agreement, authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to accept the agency agreement and authorize the mayor and the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The motion carries.
Then we got to miscellaneous, and Councilmember Christiansen brought up the topic of parking enforcement in the downtown, and he requested information related to the revenue and expenditures to be brought before the committee at a future meeting, which I would expect staff to bring at our next meeting, so, or a meeting when the information can be put together, I guess I should say. All right? That's the end of the minutes. I would move to file the minutes. If there's questions, feel free to ask.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Work Safety Committee report for October 9th, 2012. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. At this point, we'll go into the Community Development Committee report for October 11th. Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet others that were present besides the committee, who were Frank Yanis, Mayor, Tim Johnson, Councilmember Steve Rankwest, Economic Development Commissioner, and David Little, West Central Tribune. There were no public comments. We were scheduled to have, but Dr. Kiergard was not available for the Community Development Committee meeting of last Thursday. The purpose for calling Dr. Kiergard is the fact that we are looking at selling Lincoln School relatively soon, and that sits within the fourth ward, and it's in my ward, and there have been a number of questions of what's going to happen, so it's important that we, we get Dr. Kiergard at our next Community Development Committee meeting to fill us in on what is happening, maybe even a school board member would be interesting. Item number two is 515 Northwest 7th Street, and it is a motion, the committee reviewed photographs of the deteriorating home at 515 Northwest 7th Street. The property is in foreclosure, and the deed is currently held by Fannie Mae. Research has determined that the property is on the National Register of Historic Places, but there is no evidence that the, that a preservation easement has ever been recorded for the property. In discussing the situation with the city attorney, it was recommended that the council issue a formal repair order as a preliminary step to a hazardous building declaration. Following discussion, there was a motion, it was made and seconded, and I will make that recommendation to direct staff to file formal correction orders for exterior repairs and to allow 45 days to complete the work.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to direct the staff to file formal correction orders for exterior repairs and to allow 45 days to complete the work. Is there any discussion? Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They have 45 days to fix the exterior, and if they don't, then what happens?
Mayor Yanis, Councilmember Anderson, members of the council, failure to comply with these orders would result in staff coming back to committee and seeking a hazardous building declaration, at which point it would be a directive from the council through the courts to comply. And then, failure to comply with those orders would, I believe, give the, the courts would have the authority to allow the city to go in and demolish the property.
Okay, I mean, I, in my opinion, ultimately, that's what needs to be done with that building. It's in terrible shape, but I guess if they, if they want to fix it up, that's their business. Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman DeBleek?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know this building is on the first ward, and it is in, agree with Councilmember Anderson's opinion that it is in rather poor condition, poor shape. And you're saying demolish the building if it goes to that point? Who, who would pay? Would that be assessed back to the property? Or would we, would that be something the city would have to cover and assess it back? Can you expound in that a little bit?
Councilmember DeBleek, this is a similar situation to with the council and the city underwent with a home on Havana Street Northeast. That process unfolded this summer, where the, actually, I think in the spring, the council passed an order for that building to be raised. When that did not happen, we went to court, we got the court to pass judgment, affirming the council's order, and that building was raised this summer. We will be coming back to the council, assessing the costs of raising that building to the property, and that's what would happen if this situation gets to that point as well. The council would, or the city would incur the expenses to actually do the work if it can't compel the property owner to do it itself. But in that event, the city could assess it back to the property.
And are there any extenuating circumstances, being this property is on the National Register of workplaces?
That is somewhat unclear, due to some ambiguous statutory language. There is no, as I think Mr. Peterson stated, there is no preservation easement recorded against this property. On the other hand, there is some statutory language that could require the city to involve the State Historic Preservation Office. So, that's the wild card in this situation. It remains to be seen how that'll be, that will play out.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you know when this property went into foreclosure?
As near as we can tell, it was earlier this summer.
Okay, because it's like a 12-month redemption period, and if Fannie Mae owns it now, or will be owning it, there's no way they're going to stick any money into it.
Understood. The previous property owner's in Texas now.
Yeah, if someone puts a purchase agreement on it, they aren't going to let them go in it until it closes, so I think we're just wasting our money, just might as well ride it out and wait till they sell it. Because someone will buy it for five, $10,000, try to rehab it.
What are you suggesting, Rick?
Well, I know how Fannie Mae works, and they aren't going to stick any money into it, so, and they got to wait for the redemption period.
Are you agreeing with that, Mr. Peterson?
I can't disagree with the statement that Councilmember Fagerly made. My concern would be that if somebody did buy it for five or $10,000, we're never going to see it repaired to the condition that it should be in anyways. The interior is a lot worse than the exterior. I, I don't think that you're going to have anybody lining up to buy this property unless somebody really likes the look of the lot and wants to build a different structure there. I, I don't ever see someone coming back and rehabbing this, and I'd love to be wrong. In fact, I just wrote myself a note to contact the ship bow and see if they know of anybody that's interested in coming out and taking a look at the property. And maybe the State Historic Preservation Office does, but I think it's a good idea to be proactive, at least fire the warning shot to the former property owner, and also we'll have to notify Fannie Mae as the current holder of the property through the foreclosure process, and let them know what the city's intent is, and, you know, at least we've got that part of the process done if we need to take it to the next level. It costs us virtually nothing to issue the orders.
I'll ask you both the same question, in your opinion, is this something we should deal with this evening?
I know, nothing's going to get done as long as Fannie Mae owns it, so. I got another question, the house on Litchfield Avenue, the big old two-story white one, that sat empty for how many years? Someone bought it, and it was trashed on the inside, but they painted the outside, so someone living there now?
There's no one living there, but there have been a significant amount of repairs made to that structure by the property owner.
On the inside?
Primarily, they're trying to get the exterior buttoned up before they go to work inside.
Okay, so there's another case where we should have demolished that many years ago.
Being familiar with both structures, I don't think it's a real good comparison, Councilmember Fagerly.
We do have a, a motion on the table.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Rick, could you restate what your position is on this, and what do you think we should be doing?
Well, we can go with the order, but I'm just telling you, if Fannie Mae isn't, then I'd say, oh, Wilmer, Minnesota, city is, is going to take us to court. They see that every day. They aren't going to do anything.
So, your position would be to do what, then?
I would ride it out until the 12-month redemption period is done. Trust me, they're going to liquidate it as soon as they can. See, over on Havana, that was an insurance company, wasn't it?
The two is in foreclosure and is not yet through the redemption period. Wells Fargo was over there the day they burned it to change the locks. They didn't know that it was being burnt that night. They didn't know that it was being burnt that night. So things do get done, and the mortgage companies are not always in a position to stop them or to properly insert themselves into the situation.
That wasn't Fannie Mae, though.
It was not Fannie Mae.
Wells Fargo.
The motion on the table is to direct the staff to file a formal correction orders for exterior repairs and to allow 45 days to complete the work. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, item number three is development projects within the city, and on the screen, overhead screen, you'll see a map of the city, and there are a number, 21 to be exact, I think, well, not 21, there are 21 projects that the city has in work. Staff of the City and Economic Development Commission presented a review list of recent and proposed projects. City staff presented a list of 2012 commercial industrial projects that was accompanied by an explanatory memo and location map, and that's what you see on the screen. It was noted that 2012 projects will exceed $11 million, and there is $24 million worth of commercial industrial work already anticipated for 2013. And before I go to the next part, I just want to read for your understanding. In 2011, we had a $2,227,374 project that's still in work at the Assembly of God in Wilmer. In '12, we have 14 projects that total $8,511,174. There are three projects that are public projects valued at $2,502,000. The rest are private projects by the private sector. The Wilmer Ten remodel building, $124,600. Midwest Technology Building, $24,095,000. The FedEx Edition, $435,435. West Central Communications Edition, $220,000. Skylark Mall ACMC remodel, $91,500. Mills Parts Center, $3,043,43675. Cherry Berry, and I'm not sure what that is, $150,000. Wilmer Plumbing and Heating, $233,024. Applebee's Edition, $120,000. Rural Tire Shop remodel, $95,000. And of course, Goodwill, which is $1.4 million, that's coming up nicely on the corner of First Street and 19th Avenue. So again, that's $8,511,000 worth of projects. Pending projects total $24,800. And that would include Ridgewater College for $10 million, the MinDOT expansion, $5 million, the Mills Car Dealership Building at $5 million, Rice Care Center Phase D is $2 million, Rice Care Center Phase E is $2 million, and Rice Home Medical is $800,000. So that is a good sign for what's happening now, but also in the future for our city.
If I may make a comment, I would like to say that, first of all, Cherry Berry is an ice cream shop that's coming to town.
Okay, thank you.
And secondly, this is not, and I repeat, is not, a do-nothing council. Go ahead, Councilman.
Other comments, Mr. Mayor? Otherwise, we can go to then item number four, which is a miscellaneous item. Councilmember Amen inquired about the downtown plan progress and the revision of development financing, development financing policy. Staff indicated that the downtown planning committee was scheduled to meet on October 17th, but the work had not yet begun on the revisions to the development financing policies. And unless there are questions, Mr. Mayor, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development report for October 11th. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Consideration of agricultural land exemption or special assessments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Included in your packet is a summary document outlining a number of agricultural exemptions. In the city's assessment policy, there's a section that allows for the exemption of special assessments for those properties that would qualify under the agricultural definition. The process that is followed is annually, they have to apply to the city clerk's office. Kevin is ill tonight, so I'm going through a summary for him. Those properties that are listed in the attached resolution have applied and do qualify under the criteria outlined in the assessment policy. So the action being asked tonight is a motion to adopt the resolution granting those properties the agricultural exemption that they've applied for.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution exempting qualifying agricultural landowners of the special assessments. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dakin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion carries. Go ahead, Steve, on the second one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next item is a resolution to issue the sale of Commercial Development Revenue Refunding Note Series 2012. Members of West Central Industries apologize, they have had conflicts for tonight, a couple different reasons. They did contact our office, and we indicated that we would be able to answer any questions you may have. This item has been before the Finance Committee a couple different times. In 2005, as was previously discussed in the Finance Minutes, West Central Industries had come, came to the city and asked for conduit financing for the addition of their new and remodeled kitchen, expanding their meals-on-wheels service. About a month ago, they came back to the city due to the decrease in interest rates and asked if the city would also act as a conduit financing to refund those bonds, and that's the item for you tonight. The action for the resolution would be to issue in the sale of Commercial Development Revenue Refunding Note Series 2012. It would actually decrease the term of their present debt by about seven years and lower their interest rate from about 5% down to a little over 2%. There is no financial responsibility to the city. Our bond counsel and bond consultants have both reviewed all the documents. They have paired the documents, and West Central Industries pays the total cost for those reviews of our consultants. The recommendation tonight is to pass a resolution approving the issuance and sale of the Commercial Development Revenue Notes of 2012 and authorizing execution of the documents relating thereto.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve. Motion has been made and seconded. Did you second? Somebody seconded it, didn't they? Dennis moved and Bruce moved, both of them moved, so, okay. One or the other. Seconding it. Seconding, seconding it. The motion has been made and seconded to pass the resolution as submitted. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, the original note was that it said $1.1 million, 20 years, and they're paying off, they're going to borrow 500. That means they paid off the balance of it, correct?
They are paying, the amount due is about $900,000 or a little over, a little under $900,000 at this point. They are using some cash that has accumulated for the debt, retirement of debt, and so the remaining amount would be paid off, yes.
Okay, so the cash you say that was being accumulated was for the debt?
I believe so.
Okay, because that's a chunk of money, $400,000. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dakin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion carries. Consideration of the final plat for the Fair Acre Edition. Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, the planning commission and staff have completed their review of the Fair Acre Edition final plat. The applicant for that plat was Don Williamson, and the plat consists of 11 acres, or I'm sorry, 11 lots for single-family homes on Southwest 15th Street. The property is owned R1 for single-family residential only and is proposed to be developed around a private cul-de-sac. The CUP for the planned unit development was approved for the private street, and all utilities will be private, and the city engineer has reviewed and approved the plans. Declarations and private covenants are required and will be recorded congruous with the plat regarding the private streets, their maintenance, et cetera. Staff recommends that the council approve the final plat of Fair Acre Edition.
Move to approve. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the final plat of the Fair Acres Edition. Is there any discussion? Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, what does it mean when you say the utilities are private?
Once they leave the right-of-way of 15th Street, they will not be the responsibility of the city or the municipal utilities.
Okay. Makes them private, thank you.
Any further discussion?
That includes all utilities?
That, no, that does not apply to the electrical, that sewer and water.
Only sewer and water.
And street, yeah.
So the electrical utility in that older area will still be the responsibility of municipal utilities?
Yes, and that's why the utilities was involved and secured all the easements they requested.
Councilman Dock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, we saw this, what, three or four years ago, something like that? What's different now than it was back then that?
Three or four years ago, I don't think Mr. Williamson had a real clear design concept. He played with a number of different ideas. This is really the finalization of his plans for the development of the property. It's my understanding that he intends to build here and live here as well. At the time, a few years ago, we were looking, I believe, at a public street in there, and he wanted to do some unique things within the right-of-way regarding rain garden, stormwater collection, disposition, those types of things that our engineering staff was not comfortable with. So this time around, they went with the private street as an outlot in the plat, which gives them full authority to do those things. It will still require review by our city engineering department as they have the construction plans prepared. But again, our only concern now is that they take care of their own stormwater and that they manage the traffic on that right-of-way, maintaining the necessary widths for emergency vehicle access and parking as they see fit.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Mayor Yanish? I would like to point out that the right-of-way that they are proposing for that cul-de-sac is 20 feet wider than our typical residential right-of-way, which gives them the space within that right-of-way to do different things with their stormwater collection and disposal. So great opportunity to see something different done in the city.
And that was negotiated out at the plat decision?
The specifics of what's being done did not go to the planning commission. It was just expressed to the planning commission that they were going to be doing some different things with the stormwater. I know the previous engineer had some conversations, and, you know, we have no reason to expect that it's not going to be done correctly because our engineers will still be doing some review of the plans.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Would you like to do the next one for us, too, Bruce?
Sure.
The consideration of preliminary plat for the Quinn Edition?
Quinn Edition is property located along the Trot Avenue Service Drive, and it's property that is owned by the Quams. The current plat, or the plat that's being proposed is generally to just clear up some property lines and to make some adjustments to existing property dimensions. There is no additional development planned on the site. The planning commission approved the plat with conditions of easements being added, and those will have to show up on the final plat, and also with the understanding that if additional permits are issued for development construction on these properties, that the Trot Avenue Service Drive will have to be developed as a paved city street. Right now, it's undeveloped or unpaved city right-of-way, and they will have to make the stormwater ponding improvements recommended by the engineer. And with those conditions, staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat.
Move to approve. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to, for the approval of the preliminary plat of the Quinn Edition. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Thank you, Bruce. City Board of Canvas, this was originally supposed to have been covered by Kevin?
Yes, Mr. Halliday is not available this evening. What you have before you is a request to set a motion to set the Board of Canvas. The correct date is November 9th of 2012, and at 3:00 PM, that is the recommended date and time to set the Board of Canvas.
So move. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to call the Board of Canvas for November 9th, 2012. Is there any discussion?
Question, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if it's directly related to this. I wonder, Kevin isn't here tonight, but I have talked to some people that since we redistrict Ward 3 into the Sprayville area, there's, some people haven't been informed or notified of any change of polling places. Is that something that has just recently been done, or has the note cards been?
I would need to verify this with the city clerk, but I believe all of that notification actually is supposed to come from the state.
It's all coming from the state?
It was to have come from the state or the county. I believe that was the case, that was what was discussed when we did the redistricting, but I can check with Mr. Halliday, and we can get an answer back to you.
Okay, I've had some people that are.
Yeah, I believe it does come from the Secretary of State's office.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would you do that, Charlie, just to make sure that they?
Yeah, I will verify that with Mr. Halliday.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We are to the point. Are we, announcement of the council committee meeting dates. Councilman Reese.
Public Works, Public Safety, 445 on the 30th of the month, Tuesday, the 30th.
Councilman Anderson.
Finance Committee will meet Monday, the 22nd. That will be here, it will be at 445, and it will be recorded. And that is for all council members.
And that is a work session?
That is a work session, yes.
Councilman Dakin.
I received the city administrator's October 12th memo, and it lists the community development as the 25th, but I think, Mr. Peterson, we had the first, right? We had agreed to the first, okay? So we need to change that to November 1st.
November 1st. Okay. And Councilman Amen.
No labor meeting scheduled today.
No labor meeting scheduled. Is there any miscellaneous?
Mr. Mayor?
If I could make note that this past weekend, the Minnesota Disabled American Veterans held a fall conference in the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I have to tell you, we get their reports every now and then. They do a marvelous job. They do a marvelous job. I can't tell you how helpful they are in preparing and getting people situated and lined up in their badges and what have you. It's just really a good group. And we had a full day on Friday and a full day on -- or half a day on Saturday, dealing with ways to assist Minnesota veterans to get them reintegrated into regular, normal life. And we had a banquet Friday night that was just outstanding, and, Mr. Mayor, thank you and your wife for coming and being a part.
You're welcome.
We also welcomed the group to our city, and it was a nice event. And again, the Convention and Visitors Bureau really does a first-class job.
And if I might add, you'll never find a nicer group of people.
Thank you.
Do we have any more miscellaneous?
Move to adjourn.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.
All right.